Good afternoon. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I am Tyra Bataglia, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the July 16th, 2025 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carrollk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Public participation will be held at approximately 5:15 PM following the Report section of the Board's meeting agenda. Speakers will be directed to the boardroom from the building lobby and allowed to three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Board members, please turn off your microphones when you're not speaking and please use your cards. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please be seated. May I please have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey. A second by Ms. Zimmer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? May I please have an approval of the minutes? Moved by Dr. Malvo.
I'll say it.
And a second by Mr. Whistler. Everyone approve?
Aye.
All right. Okay, next we'll move on to our student, Carroll County Student Government Report. Mr. Dean, if you would like to come over here to the podium, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for your time today. My name is Mason Dean, a senior at Winters Mill High School, and I am the President of the Carroll County Student Government Association for the 2025-2026 school year. In the past few months, CCSGA has begun rolling over into the new school year. Following April's elections, I was tasked with appointing a team of staff positions based on applications submitted by middle and high school students from around the county. I'm happy to report that this process has been completed and the staff team has been selected for the coming year. With the officers selected, we are now working hard to hold summer meetings to plan for our advanced retreat in the beginning of the school year. I would also like to give a special thank you to our new student representative, Jasmine Amuseva. I am excited to work alongside with you and look forward to seeing what we can accomplish in the coming year. Thank you all for your time and have a great rest of your evening. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. All right, I'm going to turn everything over now to Dr. McCabe.
At this time, we have the pleasure of recognizing the dedicated employees of our school system who have retired during the last year. Board members, please proceed down in front of the dais to greet our retirees and present them with a small token of our appreciation as their names are called.
Good afternoon. My name is Ernesto Diaz, I'm the Director of Human Resources, and it's my pleasure to say a few words. It is always an honor to recognize all of our retirees for their hard work and dedication throughout their careers with Carroll County Public Schools. This year, we are marking the retirement of 105 employees who have given a combined total of 2,605 years of service to our schools. To those who are here with us this afternoon and those who weren't able to attend, we are indebted to you for the incredible work you have done over the past many years. You can take great pride in knowing that you have touched countless lives and had a tremendous impact on our students and our community. We are grateful to you for the service and commitment you brought to Carroll County Public Schools each and every day, and you will truly be missed. Please know how much you are appreciated. Retirees, as I read your name, please come forward. Our first retiree this evening is Nilam Batra, Grade II Teacher, Eldersburg Elementary School, 21 years of service. And you'll come right here to Ms. Sandy. Our next retiree is Timothy Blizzard, Applied Mechanical Engineering, Carroll County Career Our next retiree is Gary Foot, Physics Teacher, South Carroll High School, 34 years of service. Our next retiree is Bradley Collins, Instrumental Music Teacher, Eldersburg Elementary School and Linton Springs Elementary School, 42 years of service. Our next retiree, Stacy Han, Licensed Practical Nurse, Manchester Valley High School, 30 Our next retiree, Daniel Hewens, Family and Consumer Science and Physics Teacher, Westminster Our next retiree, Cheryl Lane, Special Education Resource Teacher, Oklahoma Road Middle School, Our next retiree, Harold Leese, Building Supervisor, Francis Scott Key High School, Our next retiree is Moira Mayhew, Cafeteria Manager, Oklahoma Road Middle School, 24 years of service. Oh, in Carrolltown, I'm sorry. And Carrolltown Elementary School. Right across the street. Our next retiree, Carolyn Parler, Custodian, Pars Ridge Elementary School, 17 years And last but certainly not least on our list, Joan Spindler, Registrar, Grade II, Linton Springs Elementary School, 25.5 years of service. Before we conclude, are there any other retirees in the audience that perhaps we have not called or didn't check in? Okay. With that, thank you to all of you and best wishes for a happy, healthy, rewarding retirement. Thank you. Thank you.
... meeting students where they are, mentally, socially, physically, and spiritually. This roller skating event was generously hosted through Coppermine Sportsman's Hall. It was a great turnout headed by Shiloh Middle and North Carroll Middle Campus Life Director, Jen Allender. I really enjoyed helping my son also get free of his skate mate for the first time and completely skate unassisted, thank goodness. So I'm so proud of him and all the kids. On June 27th, I participated in the Board Member Retreat. It was such a great experience shared with my fellow Board Members. It was not an obligatory action or some planned annual event. This retreat occurred because we requested it. In the process, we gained even more information on the structure and the mechanics of the budget. We engaged in valuable team-building exercises. I want to give special thanks to Molly Young, Director of Board Development from MAB, who led in the exercises. And in addition, I really appreciate the efforts and the time spent by Mr. Locata and Dr. Harmon, who presented on the budget process. It was highly informative. Again, I want to thank my fellow Board of Education Members for their desire to have the retreat and come together as a group. Thank you for that. And to you, Carroll Countyans, to everyone, may you have a very healthy and safe rest of the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Malvo. Dr. Dorsey?
Okay, thank you. On June 12th, I attended a meeting of the MAB Resolutions Committee. We, as a committee, reviewed resolutions that we will recommend re-adopting without amendments and resolutions that will be recommended for re-adopting with amendments. These recommendations will be presented to Board Members at this year's MAB Conference. On June 13th, I attended a MAB Education Equity Meeting, and during that meeting, we discussed our overarching goal, which is educating that equity is for everyone. On June 19th, I participated in the Juneteenth Celebration at the former Robert Moten Consolidated School. Memories were shared by students who had attended the school prior to its closing at the end of the 1964-65 school year. On June 23rd, I joined with volunteers to welcome teachers to the former Robert Moten Consolidated School. Mr. Melhorn and staff provided our CCPS teachers with a professional learning opportunity to visit many of our local history sites and museums to learn more about the county's history and how to embed it into our current curriculum. So thanks to Mr. Melhorn for the invitation and to the teachers who are involved in this project. On June 27th, I joined with fellow Board Members, as Dr. Malvo has said, in our Board Retreat where we reviewed key elements of our role and also reviewed the budget process. And on July 2nd, I attended a planning session for an upcoming MAB Conference Program Committee meeting. And finally, I too hope that everyone is enjoying a safe, happy summer with family and friends. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Dorsey. Ms. Zimmer?
Thank you. On Friday, June 20th, I attended a committee meeting for the Partnership for a Healthier Carroll. On June 27th, I joined my colleagues for our Board of Education Retreat. Earlier today, I attended the mock, the Third Annual Mock Trial Camp, a partnership between Carroll County Public Schools and the Carroll County Public Library. After two days of coaching from high school mock trial students, middle school participants argued their cases today at the Carroll County Circuit Court before Judges DeLeonardo, Lewis, and Getty. That was a really wonderful experience to see just how capable our middle school students really are. I was really impressed. And this month, my spotlight, Dr. Dorsey, you beat me to the punch here, I'd like to spotlight Carroll County Public Schools' history program and commend Mr. Ryan Melhorn for leading the Place-Based Learning Initiative, "The Power of Place: Local Voices, Local Stories." Place-based learning allows students to engage directly with their community, its physical environment, local history, culture, and people. Research shows that when history is taught in connection to the student's own community, their interest in history and willingness to become civically engaged increases significantly. During the week of June 23rd through 27th, 10 CCPS educators participated in a five-day learning experience, professional learning experience, visiting a variety of local historical sites and organizations, including the Historical Society of Carroll County, Ellsworth Cemetery, Union Mills Homestead, the Farm Museum, and more. While earning three Continuing Professional Development Credits, these educators will now use the summer to develop lesson plans to incorporate primary sources from Carroll County's history aligned to the standards in MSDE Elementary, Middle, or High School U.S. History Framework. These lessons will be embedded in our current CCPS curriculum. I was honored to join our educators for several site visits and deeply appreciate the opportunity to learn alongside them as we explored the rich and meaningful history of Carroll County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmer. Your turn.
All right. Well, I hope everyone, echo everyone's comments, hope everyone's having a terrific summer. On June 13th, I worked alongside fellow Lions from the Freedom District Lions Club at the Sykesville Carnival. Unfortunately, the firehouse there, they had two of their carnival days rained out because of intense storms, and I believe a couple of other carnivals have experienced rainouts in a couple of days, Manchester on July 1st and Winfield on July 9th. So if able, I urge the local community to chip in and help our firefighters during these fundraising events. They rely upon us extensively for donations to maintain readiness and keep us all safe. On June 15th, I had a wonderful Father's Day with my four sons, and I hope everyone had a chance to honor the fathers in their lives, but had a great Father's Day on the 15th of June. On June 27th, again, I met with my colleagues here for the Board Retreat. I appreciate the team-building exercises offered by Ms. Young and the discussions that our MAB facilitator actually presented to the group. And as always, the superintendent and staff did a wonderful job helping us dig deeper into both the operational and capital budgets. I think one of the most important aspects of our job is fiscal governance and responsibility, but thanks for helping us dig deeper into that process. On June 28th, my wife and I walked in the Sykesville Carnival Parade, or Sykesville Parade, rather, downtown Sykesville, along with members of my church. The Downtown Sykesville Connection and Sykesville Police Department did an incredible job keeping this southeast Carroll County tradition fun and safe. On July 4th, I spent the day with family and celebrated our nation's 249th birthday. I didn't get a chance to go to the Farm Museum, but I heard the fireworks were good there as well, and I can only imagine what the celebrations will be next year for our 250th anniversary. On July 8th and 12th, my family spent time at the Winfield Carnival in South Carroll. They capped off the week with an incredible fireworks display there as well. On July 9th, I attended Freedom District Lions Club meeting and watched the installation of the 25-26 Officers and Executive Board. This incredible organization, along with many other Lions Clubs in our county, do wonderful things for our educators and students. I encourage our students when they return from school or from summer this September, I encourage them to get involved in their Leo Clubs and make a difference in their community. We do need you. And then a couple of more things I want to add before I give up the microphone is congratulations to our Commissioner, Ed Rothstein, for being appointed Secretary of Maryland's Department of Veterans. He answered the call, and that's definitely in his wheelhouse. He cares deeply for veterans, and he'll do a wonderful job there. And we just had a terrific working relationship with him and other members of the Commission to help our school system stay strong, and we look forward to the person that is appointed to his position and working with them as well. And then finally, congratulations to our very own Dr. Dorsey for being recognized by McDaniel College. You truly are a Carroll County gem and definitely well-deserved. Congratulations. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Whistler. I hope everyone is enjoying their summer and they're being safe. Senior portraits are taking place, and that was a little bit of a mama emotional moment where my son was going there. So, here we go, another senior class of 2026. We do have fall tryouts are getting ready to start, so I want to wish all students in our high schools that are trying out for those sports, incoming freshmen, make sure you're getting involved in various school clubs and activities. Make sure you check out what the school has to offer between FFAs and your student governments. So, Mr. Dean's like, hello. So yes, definitely get involved in your, in your school communities. Echo to what Mr. Whistler was saying, congratulations to Mr. Rothstein and to Dr. Dorsey. That was incredible to see. I saw that on social media, and I was like, oh, that's so cool. So congratulations. I do want to take this time to ask everyone to make sure to take a trip out to the Carroll County 4-H and FFA Fair, which begins on July 25th through August 1st. This year's theme is "There's No Place Like Fair." Events begin on July 25th with the tractor and semi pool at 7:00 PM. On July 28th, there is the Vintage Grain Truck and Dirt Drag Racing. On Sunday, there'll be a parade at the fairgrounds, and that's all the different clubs get together and they present what their themes are. There is also barrel racing on Tuesday and as well as Children's Day Tuesday afternoon. Wednesday, of course, is the anticipated cake auction, so it'd be interesting to see what the new record is this year. Thursday's the skid steer rodeo, and Friday, of course, is the livestock auction, which again, these are the, the kids are out there with their projects and they're auctioning off their livestock animals. So yes, you could stock up your freezer. Why not? Saturday is the car demolition derby, which is always a packed house. So I do hope you can go out there and help support the fair and see all the different exhibits the kids enter, visit the arena, you know, and don't forget to get some great 4-H volunteer food. There is truly no place like fair, especially here in Carroll County, and I do wish all the participants good luck. It is very hard, it is challenging, and these kids put a lot of heart and sweat and blood into their activities, so please go out and, and support that.
Get them some cakes.
Oh, get those cakes too, yes. Dr. McCabe?
First this evening, I would like to add my congratulations to our own Dr. Patricia Dorsey for receiving the 2025 Joseph R. Baylor Award from McDaniel College. This prestigious award is presented annually to a McDaniel College Master's Degree recipient who has made a significant contribution to the field of education. Dr. Dorsey began teaching in Carroll County in 1972 and was an ele, sorry, I gave that up. And was an elementary school teacher, Title I Resource Teacher, Assistant Principal, and Principal. She has been a member of the Board of Education since 2018 and has actively contributed to various committees with the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. She is a former member of the MAB Board of Directors and is currently co-chair of the Conference Program Committee. Dr. Dorsey, congratulations again on receiving this much-deserved award, and thank you for your dedication to our school system. Next, I am proud to announce that students from the Carroll County Career and Technology Center earned medals in four events in the Skills USA National Competition, a gold in promotional bulletin board, silver in both nurse assisting and community service, and bronze in photography. Students finished in the top 10 in five additional events, automotive maintenance and light repair, digital cinema, video production, engineering technology design, and criminal justice. Congratulations to these outstanding students and their instructors. I also would like to congratulate Kathy Keefalver, a mathematics teacher at Manchester Valley High School. She has been named the 2025 Outstanding Mathematics Educator in the High School category by the Maryland Council of Teachers of Mathematics. This prestigious honor recognizes exceptional dedication to teaching, innovative approaches in the classroom, and unwavering commitment to student success. Kathy's passion for mathematics education and her ability to inspire both students and fellow educators alike exemplify the very best of the profession. Congratulations as well to Abby Day, a 2025 graduate of Liberty High School, whose artwork was selected for Best in Show in the National Art Honor Society's juried exhibit. Her work is one of only nine pieces in the exhibition to earn Best in Show honors. Abby created her digital piece entitled "Vector Lollipops" in her AP 2D Design Class. I would also like to announce the winner of the inaugural Superintendent's Cup. This award recognizes our top athletic program for each of the three sports seasons and an overall winner for the year based on four categories: scholarship, sportsmanship, service, and athletic success. Each category comprises 25% of the overall score for the season. Century High School earned the most points in both the fall and winter seasons, and Liberty earned the most points in the spring. The final standings for the 2024-2025 school year are: Third place, Manchester Valley High School; Second place, Liberty High School; and First place, and the winner of the Superintendent's Cup, is Century High School. Cup, is Century High School. Congratulations to the student athletes and staff at Century for receiving this recognition, and to all of our high schools for a very successful year. And finally, we have one more retiree that we would like to recognize this evening, and I will have Mr. Diaz come to the podium as it's been moved to the center. And if you could read the name and give our retiree his gift, that would be wonderful. And this person, we know very personally because he worked here. And not only did he work here, but he visited all the schools every day, so he's a face that we all recognize.
Yes, and thank you for the flexibility. So without further ado, put your hands together for Mr. Kenneth Myers, driver of plant operations, 47 and a half years.
Thank you. Sorry, it's late.
I'd really like to shake his hand.
Kenny, could you stay for a minute? We would like to just quickly shake your hand before we-- for all of those years.
Forty-seven.
Spring, snow.
Couldn't do three more years.
That's right.
I introduce myself.
Do you want to open it?
No, it's okay, thank you. I have to cut down on my fizzy drinks, so I only get one a day now.
Jerk.
It's fizzy.
What do you mean, anything fizzy? Not sweet?
Anything fizzy. So I pour my soda.
Yes, congratulations to all of our retirees. All right, we are going to move now onto presentations. This is regarding our procurement process. Dr. McCabe.
At the prior meeting during the award of bids, the board expressed interest in understanding the procurement process in more detail. We promised to follow up, and we have asked our Supervisor of Purchasing, Mr. Mike Myers, to provide the board with a brief overview. Mr. Myers?
Great, thank you, Dr. McCabe and members of the board. I'm Mike Myers, I'm the Supervisor of the Office of Purchasing, and I really appreciate the time you have allowed me to give you a very high-level overview of the Office of Purchasing. I'd like to talk to you about some of our goals, some of the methods of procurement that we use to achieve those goals, and then some new initiatives we have in the office. I've been in the position since about March 1st, so this is a good opportunity to get you up to date and kind of tell you what we have going on. Right, so our first goal is to procure the goods and services required at the best cost and quality available. So the main function of the Office of Purchasing is to serve as a support agency for all the other agencies within the school system. We want to take on the procurement role so that facilities can focus on maintaining the facilities, and most importantly, the administrators and educators and teachers can focus on education in the classroom. We don't want them to have to be running around worrying about where to get classroom supplies, where to get musical instruments, services that they need to do their job. We want them to focus on their core mission. So the Office of Purchasing assumes the role of procurement, so we can take that off their plate and allow them to focus on, you know, what they really need to focus on. The second goal is to provide a fair and transparent and efficient procurement process for all vendors. We want vendors to feel like we're giving them a fair shot at all the CCPS business. We want them to think that we have or feel that we have a fair and easy-to-work-with process. We don't want to be difficult. Eventually, if vendors feel like they're not getting a fair shake, or that our processes are difficult or confusing or inconsistent, they're going to stop bidding on our projects, and eventually, less competition is going to lead to higher prices. So we want to be as fair, transparent, and efficient with our vendor community as we can be. Our third goal is eliminate or mitigate exposure to fiscal, contractual, and legal risks. All contracts that we sign come through our office for review. We want to mitigate, to the extent possible, any kind of fiscal, legal risks. A lot of laws surrounding procurement. Anytime you're dealing with money, there's a lot of fiscal risk, so we review all contracts that come through the office, and we try to mitigate those risks for the board. Finally, we want to maintain processes to promote trust among the school system, vendor community, and the public. Nobody likes paying taxes, nobody likes spending money, but it's a necessary evil. So what we want to do is we want the public to trust that we are spending their tax dollars in the most responsible way possible. My office wants the board to feel like we are spending, you know, the money and entering into contracts in the most, you know, responsible way possible, and we want our vendors to feel like we are being the most open, fair, and transparent, you know, organization that we can be. So building trust with all the stakeholders is really something that's important to, you know, our office, and it's something we strive for every day. So as you'll see later in the award of bids, there's a couple of different procurement methods that we use to achieve these goals. The first and probably the most popular right now are the invitation for bids. That's where we'll have a need, we'll advertise it. Usually it'll be advertised for three to four weeks. It's open to all vendors who are qualified to bid on this good or service. We'll receive bids, and then we'll come to you. Usually, it is going to be based on the lowest bid. Sometimes you get a negative connotation with low bid, where you think you're getting something not very high quality. Low bid kind of has a negative connotation. I can assure you, what we do is we have minimum requirements for any of the goods or services we bring into the school system. So we're not going to just take the cheapest widget. It's going to have to meet certain standards for performance and quality. We're also going to look at these vendors. We're not going to enter into a contract with a vendor who we don't feel like can service the school system. So there's a lot of vetting that goes on before we come to you with a low bid type of award. So you can assure though, even though maybe the lowest price is going to be a minimum quality that's going to work for the school system, the vendor, we're going to believe that he's going to be able to service the contract. Very similar to an invitation for bid or a request for proposals. Sometimes where an invitation for bid is usually based on low price, there are certain times, if you're talking about financial services, student services certainly, any kind of benefits, there are things where you don't want to just go with the lowest bidder that meets a minimum requirement. You want somebody who's going to be very well qualified, and somebody's going to give you the best value. So ways for proposals. Price will be part of the evaluation, maybe 50% of it. The other 50% is going to be the capabilities of the vendor. So we're going to go through a little more of a review process. We're going to evaluate these vendors, see who's going to give us the absolute best service for a fair price. So it's sometimes a 50-50 thing, but you're going to get vendors who are a little bit more capable, maybe than just your IFB vendors who meet minimum requirements to, you know, service the school system. So with both of these methods, we'll advertise them on the street. They're open to anybody qualified, anybody registered with the school system to bid. Probably be advertised for three to four weeks. There's some time to evaluate the bids or the proposals, and then we come to the board for approval. So you're looking at probably eight to 10 weeks for an IFB, 10 to 12-week process for an RFP. So it does take a little bit of time, but I feel like it's the most open, transparent, fair process for any of these awards that we make. Some other methods that we use, and this one you'll see quite often, is cooperative or piggyback purchases. I think sometimes these are a little bit misunderstood. They may appear like they're no-bid contracts, or we just have awarded a contract without a whole lot of vetting or research. Cooperative contracts are where we may enter into a consortium or a group of other school systems, counties, however, that have similar requirements, and we would go out to bid. A piggyback is where maybe a larger organization is going out to bid, already gotten set pricing, and then we would just utilize that contract. But in any event, both of these are absolutely bid. They may not have been bid by Carroll County Public Schools, but they were bid by another jurisdiction or a cooperative group who bids these things. So what we do from that is we really benefit from the economies of scale. We may buy 10,000 units, but the contract may be based on 50,000 units, so we're going to get a better price. It's also going to reduce our overhead. It does take a lot of time and money to conduct a solicitation, so it saves us in overhead, and it saves the vendors. They're allowed to give a little bit of better price because they don't have to respond to all of these solicitations. Additionally, we use them a lot in technology services. A good example is like Dell. A lot of people use the Dell product. Dell can't respond to all the solicitations that go out across the country. So they've offered their best price to some of these larger consortiums, and by us using those, we're going to get that price. If we bid these things out, in a lot of cases, we're not going to get the responses that we're looking for because they just don't have the resources to respond to everything when they've already got contracts that you can use. So cooperatives, when you see those, I don't want you to think that they're no-bid. They are certainly have been bid. Different cooperatives, we look at all, the different cooperatives, we compare, you know, to see what our best value is. We also try to determine if we could do better, do we think bidding it ourselves? So cooperatives, you're going to see those a lot, they're very popular. Some additional methods, sometimes you see emergency procurements. Everybody's somewhat, you'd be familiar with, you know, a national or state emergency. Luckily, you don't have a lot of those. But locally, if you've got an HVAC go out in a school in late May, I'm sure the staff and students are going to think that's an emergency. There are things that come up that we need to address immediately, there's not a lot of time. So kind of our approach to those is we have contracts in place in a lot of cases for set vendors with set prices. Emergencies, you don't know always when and where, but you know they are going to happen, so we try to prepare as much as possible ahead of time so that we're not scrambling to, you know, address some of these issues. So a source, you know, that's when there's only one source of supply. You'll see those regularly. Sometimes a good or service is only provided by one vendor or one vendor in a certain geographical area, so in that case, there's a little bit of negotiation goes on. There's no competition for that vendor, so you have to do what you can there to get your best value. And single source, you'll see that a lot when in technology, when you sign up for a software or a certain system, then you kind of get locked into some compatibility issues, and you have to keep maintaining that system with whatever product you've already bought. So those are a couple of different things that you'll see, not quite as common at all. You'll see mostly piggybacks, cooperatives, IFBs and RFPs, those are the most common that you'll see on your board report. So this is the exciting part, how can I find opportunities? And for all the vendors out there, a lot of different places you can find our opportunities to do business with the Carroll County Public Schools. First is our purchasing website. It's up on the slide, and this will be available, you know, to the public, but just go to the Carroll County Public Schools website, find the purchasing site, we'll have all our bid opportunities there. That'll tell you how to register as a vendor, all the information you need. Email and Marketplace Advantage, another great resource, that is a state website, but every school system, every county, every municipality in the state is going to advertise their bids there. So if any vendors are out there looking to, you know, do business statewide or within a certain region, that's a great place to go, register, you automatically get bid notifications, and certainly get ours from there. The Baltimore Regional Cooperative Purchasing Committee, that is a group of central Maryland, basically counties and school systems. So we post our bids there as well, but if vendors are interested in Howard, Baltimore, Hartford Counties, you'll find their opportunities as well, as along with Carroll County Public And this is a brand-new one, and this is effective July 1st, and this is one we're really excited about. We have partnered with Public Purchase, and it's a free service website. It's free for us, it's free for the vendors. Vendors can go in there and register, and this is going to give them 24/7/365 access to any kind of the vendor management tools, bid tools, anything that they would need to do to conduct business with Carroll County Public Schools. They can go on at any time and register as a vendor. They can see all our bids, they can see all our awards, they can ask questions, it's interactive. Anything that they can do now through calling our office, how we have been operating lately or, you know, in the past couple of years, is you have to call our office to register as a vendor. To get a lot of the bids, you have to call our office. So you've kind of been limited to the Monday through Friday, normal business hours. What we're doing is expanding this, and now vendors can go on middle-of-the-night, weekends, holidays, anytime, and they can do any of the things in the past they could have done by interacting with us, they can do online. So certainly, we've got a great staff. If they want to call, and I'm sure some still will and want to deal with us in person, they can, but this is going to increase, I think, our vendor outreach. It's going to allow vendors to interact with us at any time of day or night. And, you know, we're competing for vendors. As much as they're competing for our business, we're competing for them as well. We want to make it easy, we want to be accessible. So I think the easier we make it for them to interact with us, more competition we're going to have, it's going to result in better products, better vendors, better pricing. So we're very excited about the Public Purchase rollout, which was effective July 1st. So really, with that, that was my overview. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
All right, board members, if you have questions, please remember to use your cards. Mr. Whistler.
Thank you so much. I feel like this is for me, and I really appreciate it because I keep harping on the fiscal angle of everything. I'm a fiscal hawk. So first of all, thank you so much. I mean, I've owed Gary a phone call at a meeting, and I'm not sure if it's needed now, but thank you. Couple of questions. Who determines, or is there like a MSD policy or various COMAR? Who determines the duration of contracts, various contracts? And then, like, can we set the periodicity of renewal? Do you set that? Can you kind of give me insight in?
Yeah, that's mostly up to the local jurisdiction, so we can set that. Oftentimes, we do a five-- well, what we do a lot of times is a one-year contract with four one-year renewals. That's probably the most common, but at that point, you can get out at any point after the first year, if something else seems more.
Yeah, I'm just really curious if we can do some lengthier contract lock-ins. That way, we lock in prices and save funds that way, but great, I appreciate that. And then the other thing is, and again, you don't have to answer this question now, you can funnel through the superintendent later. I'm really interested to learn whether or not you recommend any policy changes or things that we need to introduce to our state delegation that we can change down in Annapolis to make things easier. You know, little things like, sometimes when rules are made, like there's threshold limits, like you need approval for this much. Well, that rule was established 15 years ago, and 35,000 then, it's not 35,000 today. Should we recommend raising, like, minimum dollar limits that we need to look at for approval? Are there things that we can change here locally? Are there things that we can change in Annapolis to make your job easier and make the process cheaper and faster, not only for vendors, but for you?
Yeah, and that's a great point. We are looking at the current policy. I think it's been quite a few years since we've updated the policy. We've got a very good policy, it's served us well. I think it's time for some updating. I would like to maybe talk about updating the $25,000 bid threshold.
Yep, makes sense.
We're a little bit behind, you know, surrounding counties and school districts, so, but that would have to go to Annapolis, I believe.
Yeah, that would be my first question for the superintendent, is how do what you want to do compare to neighboring jurisdictions? But I appreciate that. Listen, I'm a former businessman, and it's nuts, the rules and regulations that you get put on you. But if there's anything that we can do here locally, you know, I would love to look at that. And then finally, I appreciate what you had on Slide 6, if you can go back to that, is that possible? As an elected official, I can't tell you how many phone calls I get from vendors. And please don't call me. You know, this is the great place to start. You know, we have no influence on your application, your process, that's all done by staff, and so many rules, but thank you for showing that because I can roll that up and poke people in the eye without saying, that's where you want to go, not me.
Yeah, and you can certainly direct anybody to me or any of my staff, we'd be happy to talk to them, and that's what we do.
But thank you very much.
Yep, sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? All right, we'll move on. Next is our school construction report. Dr. McCabe.
This is the monthly school construction report, and we have Jim Marks here to answer any questions.
without saying, "That's where you want to go."
Yeah, and you can certainly direct anybody to me or any of my staff, we'd be happy to talk to them, and that's what we do.
But thank you very much.
Yep, sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? All right, we'll move on. Next is our school construction report. Dr. McCabe.
This is the monthly school construction report, and we have Jim Marks here to answer any questions you may have.
Dr. Malvo.
I'll let you come on up. Here you go.
No problem. Good evening.
Just a general question.
Sure.
For the Sykesville Middle School and Freedom Elementary School, planning and design, you know the design team is addressing design development and review comments from the state. Is there any point in which we should know in terms of what those comments are or how it'd be helpful for the board at this stage or later?
Well, you typically, at this stage and this part of these processes, these comments are usually not scope-changing. They're usually driven to very small corrections in the, maybe the drawings, you know, you're saying this reference or that, or they have another additional question about what a size of a space is by a few square feet or something like that. Usually, it doesn't impact the overall scope or intent of the project. If there is a comment that changes the scope or intent that large, we bring it to your attention. Usually, it would be at the end of that particular phase when we come to you, you know, at the end of DDs or into CDs, before we bring that into you, certainly before we go to a ward or even before that, if it's that large of a change. But usually, these are very minor requests that they have for us, go back and forth. We can certainly include you at any time of, for anything, and we wouldn't want to inundate you with.
If it's a large scope, that's fine.
Yes, yes. If it was very large, we would certainly bring it to your attention as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Yes, no problem.
All right, any other questions? Okay. All right, next on the agenda is public comments. Mr. Whistler.
Thank you, Madam President. Public participation, to have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers with a connection to CCPS will be allowed to address the board for the allotted three minutes. Only those speakers that have registered online and have been notified by the Communications Department will be permitted to speak. Priority will be given to those citizens that are addressing the board about an item on the current agenda. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the board through email or US mail. Public participation is not intended to be a question-and-answer session. However, if citizens do have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent and board reserve the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the public participation period. Statements to the board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. The board has scheduled time on the agenda for participation at approximately 5:15 PM. The board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. Additionally, the board retains the discretion to allow additional speakers as it deems appropriate. The board is allowing no more than an hour for public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to board members at the dais. Citizens may only address the board with their individual comments. Citizens may not stand in for another person or group and read their comments. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for board members on the table at the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the board in writing. Those seated in the audience are asked to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speaker or the board members. And that was a lot of work for one speaker today, Mr. Gary Foot.
Good evening, board members. When, in the course of human events, it becomes necessary to be critical of the local Board of Education, don't expect everyone to be happy about it. I remind you that dissent is patriotic, but I would also like to point out that many, perhaps even most, of last month's graduating seniors have no idea where the first part of my first sentence came from. And if I were to dig deeper and ask about truths that were self-evident, all men being created equal, inalienable rights endowed by man's creator, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, too many of our students would have nothing to say. These should be words and phrases that make every American sit up and pay attention. For too long, we have associated patriotism with flags flying from the back of a pickup truck, military parades and flyovers, certain words mindlessly repeated at the beginning of public gatherings, songs played before sporting events, red, white, and blue decorated pastries bought at the local convenience store, even a good deal on a mattress purchased over the Fourth of July weekend. We have neglected to remember the words and ideas that truly make us American, some of the most profound words ever written or spoken. And of course, what do these words mean? How do we preserve, protect, and defend a country based on those ideas? We can't teach what we neglect. We can't expect our students to be proud of what they haven't been taught. We have elected leaders who truly have protected their own lives and fortunes, but they have long since sacrificed their sacred honor. In one year, we could be gathering to celebrate 250 years of the American experiment, authentically uniting as one nation under God, acknowledging a new birth of freedom. Or we could be gathering to engage in a post-mortem discussion, mourning the last gasps of government of the people, by the people, and for the people. We get to choose. "A republic," said Ben Franklin, "if you can keep it."
Thank you so much, and that concludes public participation.
Next, we have our employee groups.
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe and members of the Board of Education. I am Cindy Porter, a 26-year veteran education support professional in Carroll County Public Schools. I am also president of CASE, representing clericals in assistance throughout our school system. I stand here glad that our school system received the necessary operational funding and the Blueprint Compliance Waiver. And while it seems as though we have some breathing room, recent events in our country just lead to more questions and concerns about our school system being able to help all of our students in the coming year. While I understand that we all have different ideologies concerning education, I've seen how differences in beliefs are doing nothing more than driving deep wedges between us at a time when we need to be working together as a school community more than ever before. It is disheartening to read and hear remarks about school system ideologies and union activism that are primarily meant to stir emotion and create division. It is easy to grab onto soundbites and news reports, but when and why did we lose the idea of trying to find out information and gain understanding by having conversations with people who are involved in order to be able to ascertain what is true and what is not? I have been president of CASE now for three years and have only been asked to have one conversation so someone could get to know about me better in my role as president. I valued that opportunity, and as a union leader, have always been open to those opportunities. As an example, I have spoken at these meetings for three years now, and there are people in our community who still don't know what I do or what the people in our bargaining unit do to help students and their families, even though I have always communicated that CASE is willing to be a part of solutions for issues we face as a school system. Who can say they know why I became involved with the union? While it is more time-consuming, conversations will always yield better information than can ever be received from outside sources. I don't know any educator who doesn't want to do whatever they can to help their students succeed. And educators would like nothing more than to have all parents involved in their child's education. But unfortunately, that is not what educators are dealing with today. It makes me wonder why those who are so loudly calling for parental control over education are not focusing more effort to get more parents involved, not just parents who would be involved anyway. Our school system has taken the lead by having programs like that in place to reach out to parents and encourage their involvement. You see, as a public education system, we provide educational services to all students. We provide essential services for students who need extra supports. We don't pick and choose. And from what I can see, we should be working together to make sure that all students are welcome in our schools and get the education they deserve. Go to those who studied and continue to study to be in this profession. Listen to their stories. Take the time to talk to them about what they see as concerning issues in our educational system, and then come to the table willing to work on those issues from all perspectives. That way, we can truly give the students in our county the best education possible. After all, isn't that what we are here to do?
Sorry, went down into the purse. Okay, good evening, Superintendent and board members. I am Slush Jordan, president of the Carroll County Education Association. CCA commends Carroll County Public Schools for launching the Community Schools Initiative at Tawny Town Elementary and potentially expanding it to other schools as well. We hope that this evidence-based framework will continue to grow and benefit even more schools across our county. The Community Schools Strategy is an approach to education that is over 100 years old, but has gained renewed interest in recent years. Community schools are just like traditional schools, except that they are more connected to their local community. Community schools promote family engagement, community partnerships, and collaborative leadership. They embody the adage, "It takes a village to raise a child." Community schools start by inviting families, I'm sorry, start by inviting families, neighbors, students, and all staff members to participate in a needs and assets assessment. For example, Tawny Town Elementary has engaged 193 students, 219 families, and 54 staff members in a deep needs and assets assessment over this past year. Community schools also map their community assets like local businesses, faith-based organizations, and nonprofit organizations. After completing the needs and assets assessment and mapping, community schools develop priorities based on what they learned. They could range from students wanting more after-school activities to parents wanting greater communications with educators. After community schools develop a set of core priorities, they engage the local assets and community partners to achieve their collaborative goals. For example, Tawny Town has already established 42 community partnerships, including Life Bridge Health Carroll Hospital Center, their local Judy Center, the city of Tawny Town, Carroll County Health Department, Carroll County Public Library, and more. Research from Towson University released this past year shows that Maryland community schools have already had a positive impact on attendance statewide. One core pillar of community schools is collaborative leadership at the district level, and a national best practice is having a district steering committee that helps coordinate and provide support for the district's community schools initiative. CCA and MSEA, and I'm pretty sure CASE, have significant experience and resources related to community schools, and we would be happy to partner with the district in creating a district-wide steering committee to support our local community school initiative. We have many challenges in our county, our state, and beyond, but the community schools, I think, will be a bright spot for CCPS that brings everyone together to show that education is a shared responsibility. Speaking of community support, first of all, CCA will be back scooping ice cream at the fair on the Wednesday of the fair. I'll be back judging the craft exhibits. Also, Shepherd Staff Back-to-School Backpack Program, yeah, I've got a lot of these tonight, is in full swing. Each year, this incredible organization prepares around 2,000 backpacks filled with brand-new school supplies for Carroll County students in need. The deadline to enroll your child in this program has been extended to this coming Friday, July 18th. We encourage everyone to consider supporting this amazing cause. One fun way to do that is to join them, and a few of us, at the Summer Splash Bingo this Friday, July 18th, at the Gamber Fire Hall from 5:30 to 9:30. Tickets are $30 in advance and $35 at the door, but fair warning, it usually sells out, so you want to get your ticket ahead of time. Also, Carroll County educators want to give a huge thank you to the Shepherd Staff Organization for leading this effort. You're meeting a vital need for our community and giving thousands of children the confidence and excitement of starting the school year with brand-new supplies. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll see you at the fair. All right, next, we are going to move on to action items. The first one is the approval of Award of Bids 6A. Dr. McCabe.
I want to get a motion.
Oh, I do.
I need a motion.
Motion by Dr. Dorsey, and a second by Ms. Zimmer.
All right, there are six items on the monthly Award of Bids. The first is A&amp;E Design Services for Shiloh Middle School Roof Replacement. This is the contract award for architecture and engineering services for the roof replacement and will be paid from the CIP project account. Second, we have track repairs at Liberty High School. This is a contract for summer repairs to the track at Liberty High, which is funded through the local CIP infrastructure renewal project. Third, Food Sanitation Services and Cleaning Program. This is a piggyback contract for the annual food services sanitation and cleaning program, and it is paid for through the food services program budget. Number four, football helmets and shoulder pads. This is a cooperative purchasing contract for football helmets and shoulder pads for the school year. And lastly, we have athletic field lining. This is a sole-source contract to provide consistent field lining for all field sports for the upcoming school year. Any questions?
Dr. Dorsey?
I guess mine is more going back to the school construction report on page three, where we have the Shiloh Middle School Roof Replacement indicated. We said that it would be presented at the June 16th meeting. Did we mean for tonight, then? So we are doing that tonight? If so, we'll correct June 16th to July 16th. It's on page three, I mean, is.
Yeah, I think that's, I think, yeah, that's what I thought, it was a typographical error.
Okay, yeah, since we are bringing it up tonight. Yeah, I was going to bring it up earlier, and I couldn't find my other paper, so I waited till now.
Thank you.
You're correct, Dr. Dorsey, so we'll make the correction in the permanent board document on the website.
All right, any other questions? Dr. Malvo?
Yeah, I think it's awesome that we're supporting our athletics and different things here. Not as familiar with this approach, and I'm just interested in a little bit more in terms of cost savings, it says, for automated line, or automated field lining process versus manual process with lining the field. So I know we're going with one that now does it automated. What is the cost savings on that? Do we have anything on that?
I'm not sure that in terms of just the lining of the fields, I could give you an exact cost savings there. Within the athletics program itself, there is an overall cost savings from the changes we made as part of the blueprint implementation. This award is more about reflecting that change of centralizing and standardizing the lining of the field services. So this is not a new service to Carroll County Public Schools. Individual high schools historically have employed this service. This is a reflection of us now centralizing that service at the central level so that it's not something that the schools themselves will be responsible for handling.
Great, thanks for the clarification.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. May I please have a motion for the approval of MAB Annual Dues? Moved by Dr. Dorsey, and seconded by Dr. Malvo.
This is the approval of the annual dues for the Maryland Association of
This is the approval of the annual dues for the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, and the MAB dues structure is based on the size of student enrollment in each of the school systems.
Board members, any comments or questions? Dr. Malvo?
I just think there's a typo, unless I have the older sheet on here. If you look at, on the first page, the third to last bullet, if I see this correct, staff responses to day, to-day requests for information instead of day-to-day. Am I looking at the right?
Yeah, it should say day-to-day.
Day-to-day, right?
Yeah. There should be a hyphen after the O, yeah, the O and two.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, it passes unanimously. Next, we have 6C, Approval of MAB Legal Services Association Fees. Do I have a motion? A motion by Mr. Whistler and a second by Dr. Malvo. Dr. McCabe?
And this is for the approval of the annual fee to the MAB Legal Services Association.
Board members, any questions or comments? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those signify by saying aye. It passes unanimously. Next, we have 60 Approval Revisions to Board Policy JLI Student Exclusion, Physical Restraint, and Prohibition of Seclusion. Dr. McCabe?
So moved. I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, Dr. Dorsey. And a second by Mr. Whistler.
Revisions to Policy JLI were brought to the June meeting for discussion and then submitted for public comment. At the time, Mr. Streaker highlighted the changes that aligned with recent legislation. The policy now returns for your action.
Board members, any questions or comments? Dr. Malvo?
Going to the last page in terms of definitions for exclusion, seclusion, and physical restraint. Particularly with physical restraint, it says, it has a number of bullets in terms of physical restraint does not include these things. So I'm just kind of wondering, is the thought process, if this is not part of the definition, is this something that we're saying is not really permitted to do or something we...
No, it's to clarify, it's actually completely aligned to COMAR. COMAR specifically says that what restraint is not, to make sure people are particularly breaking up a fight, is the primary thing that people need to know, that staff intervening in a fight to protect other students is not considered a physical restraint. So it's important that we articulate that, and it's articulated directly in COMAR. So that's actually directly, precisely aligned to COMAR.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Do I have a motion for 6E Approval of Revisions to Board Policy JLCE First Date in Healthcare? Moved by Mr. Whistler. And second by Ms. Zimmer. Dr. McCabe?
As with the prior item, Policy JLCE was brought for discussion in June and now returns for your action.
Board members, any questions or comments? Dr. Malvo? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those signify by saying aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Next, we have JF Approval of Carroll County Health Department Contract Vision and Hearing Screening Follow-Up. Do I have a motion? Moved by Dr. Dorsey. Second by Mr. Whistler. Dr. McCabe?
This is the annual cost-sharing contract between CCPS and the Carroll County Health Department to provide vision and hearing screening for our students as required by law.
Questions or comments? I call for the vote. All those signify by saying aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Next, we have 6G Approval of Before and After Childcare Leases. Do I have a motion? Moved by Dr. Malvo. Second by Mr. Whistler. Dr. McCabe?
Each year, the board approves leases for before and after childcare at schools where the parent organization and the providers work out agreements. The lease, which is grounded in our Use of Facilities program, is determined by square-foot costs for the space used. In your action item, there is a summary that shows which schools participate.
Any questions or comments? Dr. Malvo?
Just comment real quick, I wanted to point out, I think there's another typo. This is minor, but on the first page, second paragraph, it says before and after-school childcare service is available at 17 out of 22 schools, but it has a 19 in parentheses. I think that's supposed to be a 17 as well.
It used to be 19.
Or is it to be 19?
It's 19.
Is it? Do you see where that is?
Yes, it should be 19.
Should be 19.
Ray, is it 19?
It's 19.
That's what I thought, yes. Thank you, we'll make that change.
All right, any other questions or comments? Dr. Malvo?
One more here. Ray, would you just explain a little bit more in terms of the calculations with the building costs, where you're looking at the square feet and number of students? Is that just the two things that are being compared or computed to get that cost, or is there anything else beside that?
Well, the square footage costs are the annual costs, the actual annual operating costs for all of our buildings in aggregate. And then the square footage allotted to each provider is based on the number of students in a square-foot allotment per student that's in the program. And then lastly, there is a prorated calculation that we use for the number of days during the school year as compared to the number of calendar days in a school year. So we prorate that whole calculation to try to make it as accurate as possible for the providers and make it as fair as possible, because we want, we want these programs in the schools. It's helpful to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those signify by saying aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Next, we have 6H Approval of Transfer of School Bus Contracts. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Whistler. Second by Ms. Zimmer. Dr. McCabe?
This evening, there is one transfer of a school bus contract between two of our independent bus contractors for your approval.
Any questions or comments? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Next, we have 6I Approval of Charter School Application. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Whistler. Second by Dr. Malvo. Dr. McCabe?
We have been discussing the charter school application for a while now, and we discussed it at a joint meeting with the commissioners, and then Mr. Omealy provided an overview of the process at your April board meeting. Tonight is the board meeting where the board will need to take action to fall within the timeline for approval required by law and by Board Policy CG. The Carroll Learning Alliance, from here on out, I'll refer to them as the CLA, submitted its application on March 31st, and the law requires action within 120 days. The application has been through multiple stages of review. The CLA board has received feedback from staff in an ongoing manner. This process included meetings between the CLA and my entire review team or subsets of the review team based on the areas of focus. The CLA board has made modifications to their application based on this feedback during the process. On July 1st, they submitted a final revised application. My team reviewed the final application and made recommendations to me. I am now recommending the application for the board's approval. In making this recommendation for approval, I would like to note some overall thoughts that guide my decision. First, the application is not the final approval to open a school. As Mr. Omealy noted when he presented his overview, the application is the initial first formal step, but not the final approval. Once the application is approved, work will begin on the formal charter document. Legal counsel will have an important role in developing that document to ensure all legal interests of the board are covered. Secondly, I want to emphasize what a monumental task it is to open a school. A tremendous amount of time and effort goes into opening a brand-new school, even for us in the school system and the board. For a group of laypersons to take on that task and responsibility must seem overwhelming, but I commend the CLA board for their hard work and ongoing collaboration with our team. I applaud their receptiveness to our feedback and their willingness to work with us every step of the way. In that same vein, I would say that the daunting challenge of opening a school has led to most of the articulation that has occurred. Much of the feedback has focused on understanding all system policies and regulations and how the proposed school aligns, or if waivers are needed or being sought. Additionally, human resources and staffing has been another area of focus as we work together to ensure that the legal authority granted to me as the superintendent and to the board are upheld, along with our legal master agreements, while ensuring that the CLA has engaged in a collaborative process. Lastly, I want to comment briefly on what a charter school will mean for our operating budget. I recognize that this has been one item that has led to some public comment. I also note that Mr. Omealy has presented on what the law says and what the law requires, and the law does not allow any concern with budget being part of the decision. With that in mind, I would only mention that the FY '27 budget will be our focus as the process of the charter school moves forward. Once the application is approved and a charter agreement is completed, I will direct staff to incorporate the opening of the charter school into the FY '27 operating budget development process. Ultimately, the students of a charter school will be part of our enrollment count and therefore part of the funding formula, but this will not be the case until the first fall of the school being open. Therefore, for FY '27, we would need to plan for the initial year of funding the school. With that, I will ask Mr. O'Neil to, who's already at the podium, to introduce the board members of the CLA that are with us this evening.
I was anticipating, Dr. McCabe.
Yeah, you certainly were.
Thank you. We did want to recognize the executive officers of the Carroll Learning Alliance, and most of them are able to be with us, and I'll even recognize the one who unfortunately couldn't be here because of family summer commitments, but they are seated to my right or your left from the dais, and I'll ask them whatever they feel comfortable with. They may wave or stand or however they wish to note when I, when I call their names. We have the President, Kimberly Zentz. Mr. Brian Thompson, the Vice President of CLA. Megan Mann, the Secretary. And Danielle Daly is the Treasurer, and Danielle has worked as hard as everyone else on this, and she had those things that you do in the summer that didn't allow her to be here, but I did want to recognize her for all of her work and effort along the way. And so these have been the folks who have been the face of the organization and the primary contacts for me and Mr. Shockney and the rest of the staff as we work through this process together.
Board members, any, you can have any discussion or questions before you take action?
Board members? Mr. Whistler?
I just want to make a comment, just to echo the superintendent's earlier comments about collaboration and hard work. I really appreciate the staff doing everything they can to outline the parameters, to make sure that we're following the law and to protect the interests of our school system and citizens, I really do. And I appreciate the board members for working so hard to, you know, try to see if we can put a charter school in our county. There are dozens and dozens of charter schools throughout the state of Maryland. And so, you know, the devil's in the details with the charter, but congratulations on the first milestone, and I look forward to hearing and tracking the progress between staff and the, and the executive board. Thank you.
Any other comments? One comment I do want to make is, I know this has been a challenging, as Dr. McCabe had said, you know, when, when you have parents that are not in education taking on something like this, it is rather difficult. And it is a task and a challenge, even trying to get everything up and running. And ideas like this have been tossed around ever since the Charles Carroll days, when that school was closed. The only concern I have, again, you know, and we can't vote on it because of funding, but it, you know, here we go, is something that we lose local control over, so, because the state, you know, requires it, but it is what it is. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, call for the vote. On the application. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Do I have a motion to Approval of Personnel Action Items?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey. Second by Dr. Malvo. Dr. McCabe?
For the monthly personnel action items, there are 47 new hires since that time of year, six rehired retirees, one release from contract, six increases in FTE, and seven decreases in FTE.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Whistler? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. It passes unanimously. Next, we have... Next, I have JK Approval of Appointments. Do I have a motion? Moved by Dr. Dorsey. Second by Mr. Whistler.
I have two appointments for you this evening. The first is Stephanie Dale from Coordinator of Literacy Programs and Initiatives at MSDE to Principal at Westminster Elementary School. And the second, Daniel Miller, Assistant Principal in Baltimore County Public Schools to Assistant Principal at Westminster West Middle School.
Any comments or questions? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. It passes unanimously. Next is JL Approval of Transfer of a Portion of Robert Moton Property to the Board of County Commissioners. Moved by Mr. Whistler. And second by Dr. Dorsey.
For a couple of years, the board has been working with the Carroll County Youth Services Bureau, the YSB, to support their efforts to expand their facility. In December of 2024, the board set parameters to include the eventual transfer of a portion of the parcel of Robert Moton Elementary School, which is not used for school purposes, to support the YSB project. Now, we bring the action item to officially transfer the portion of the Robert Moton Elementary School property to the county for the purposes of the YSB expansion project.
Any comments or questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. It passes unanimously. Do I have a motion for the Approval of Deed of Easement to the Board of County Commissioners to access groundwater monitoring wells at Manchester Valley High School? Moved by Dr. Malvo. And a second by Mr. Whistler.
This is the Approval of a Deed of Easement to allow the county periodic access to monitor wells located on the Man Vow property.
Comments, questions? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. It passes unanimously. It passes unanimously. Next, we have Approval of Deed of Easement to the Board of County Commissioners to add and access groundwater monitoring infrastructure at Westminster High School. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey, and a second by Mr. Whistler. Dr. McCabe?
And this item is for approval of a deed easement to allow the county stormwater access at the Westminster High School property.
Any comments or questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. And the last one, Approval of Appointments to Ethics Panel. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Whistler.
One second.
And a second by Dr. Dorsey. Dr. McCabe?
Finally, I recommend the appointment of two individuals to fill vacancies on the board's ethics panel. Mr. Lee Sturgill and Mr. Dave Schetz would begin two-year terms with your approval.
Comments or questions? Mr. Whistler?
Thank you. Again, we had a discussion enclosed earlier, I'd like to kind of get out to the open public. I had no insight as to the makeup of the ethics panel and how they're selected and why. Can you just, for the public's good and benefit, outlay for them, like, why we have five, and, like, one has to be the parent, one, if you can just outline those kind of categories for folks, so they can just have a little bit of transparency into our ethics panel?
Absolutely. The, the board's ethics panel, both its composition and its roles and responsibilities are outlined in board, the Board of Ethics Policy, which is, I think, Policy BC, yes, Policy BC. And so, if you look at that policy, the section that defines the, the ethics panel requires a five-person panel, and so these are obviously two of the five vacancies. Folks on the panel serve a two-year term each, and those terms are staggered, and those five individuals need to, some of them represent specific backgrounds. So one of the five members of the panel is a person who has admitted to the Carroll County Bar. One of the panelists is a, a person who's a, a parent of Carroll County Public School students. Another person on the panel is someone who is affiliated with the Chamber of Commerce, and then the last two would be at large appointments.
I appreciate that. And if anybody ever has a concern about what's done in our school system, what's done with employees, you can always ask the ethics panel to look at it, right? I mean, that's what they're there for. Yeah, so, thank you.
All right, any questions, comments? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. All right, we do not have any discussion items. And none other, no unfinished business. Next, yay! 4:00 PM, Wednesday, August 13th, 2025, we will meet here in the board meeting with public participation at 125 North Cork Street here in Westminster. Everyone have a good rest of your summer. May I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Dr. Malvo.
One second.
Second by Mr. Whistler. Everyone have a good rest of your summer, and I'll see you at the fair.